Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. It is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to bow your heads with me and for our invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time to get together to perform the will of the citizens of Apex, to serve them. We pray for your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions tonight. We pray that each of us will consider each other as partners, as team members, and consider the issues carefully and seriously, and we will do the best thing we can for our citizens. We thank you for the protection that you provide those who fight overseas for our freedom. We pray that you would continue to provide protection for them and comfort the families of those who have lost loved ones. And we pray all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So just before we get into the presentations, I'll remind everyone that when we have a public hearing tonight, if you intend to speak during one of those public hearing items, you will need to have your name on one of those yellow sheets by about 12 minutes past seven when the clerk will pick those up. Also, if you did not get an agenda, there's an agenda outside that looks like this. If you intend to speak, you should also get the yellow sheet that provides the guidelines for speaking and familiarize yourself with them before that time comes. Thank you for being here, everybody. We welcome those of the public to join us in this meeting. At this time, I'll call Allison Fluit of the Kimley Horn and Associates. And Shannon, are you doing the introduction for this?
No, Allison will take the lead, but I'm just pulling up the first.
All right. So for everyone's knowledge, we are working very hard on a 2045 land use plan and updated map. This will update our 2030 land use planning, and Allison and Kimley Horn's associates, along with Shannon Cox and others with the town, have been working very hard to make progress. This is a long effort. Was it 12 to 18 months, perhaps? So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Allison to share some information and updates with the council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank everyone for the opportunity to present to y'all today. I did want to give you a little bit of background on our advanced Apex planning effort, let you hear a little bit of the background of where we are right now and some of the activities that we've been engaged in since the start of our planning process. So first, a little bit of background. What is Advanced Apex? As you've already heard, this is really one kind of combined process that's going to result in two plans: a long-range transportation plan for the area, as well as an updated land use map for the area. One of the reasons why we really wanted to look at doing these things in tandem with another, one another, is that it does ensure the recommendations for the multimodal transportation network are going to be more effectively linked with some of the land use decision-making that you all are going to be able to engage in. This is very much a community-driven planning process. We have a number of different engagement opportunities for different groups across the entirety of our study period. We have a steering committee that is going to help us guide this process. We've already met with the committee one time, and we'll be meeting with them three additional times. We also have two public workshops. We've already held our first public workshop, which I'll be telling you more about in a moment. We've had focus groups that are focused on some particular areas of interest that affect both the transportation and land use process, so there'll be eight of those meetings throughout this planning effort, as well as electronic surveys. We want to be reaching people, not only those folks that can come and attend with us in person, but those that we're able to reach by other means. And the largest survey that we are releasing electronically has recently been closed. I'll be able to touch on that a little bit during this presentation. So ultimately, how these plans are going to be used is by this body, as well as town staff, as a tool to help guide some of the decision-making that you'll be able to engage in in the years to come. This is also very much an external communication tool that's going to allow you to more effectively communicate some of the needs to the MPO, the CAMPO, as well as to state and federal funding partners, and to help you form your CIP year over year. Our planning process is an 18-month process. We aim to be concluding that process in December of next year. And notably, we'll have a second public workshop opportunity coming up in the summer timeframe as well. So I know that many of you all were able to attend our public workshop. During that public workshop, we had a number of activities throughout the entire building here. We also had a presentation in this very room, and so I'm going to highlight a couple of the key things that we presented as a part of that, that really document some of the trends and expectations that we've seen for the town. So looking over the past few years with the town, we've seen a robust population growth. So just between 2010 and 2015, your population has grown 19 and 1/2 percent. You're now the third-largest municipality in terms of population in Wake County, after Raleigh and Cary. Now, when we start to project out those numbers, out through 2030, let's say, according to the census, we're looking at population estimates around 70,000. So that's robust growth projected to continue into the future. Our growth includes not only population increases, but also an increase in geographic size. Notably, one of the things that you'll see when you start to look at how those changes are affecting us is that the number of people per acre in the town is actually decreasing. We also see that there is still a robust number of building permits that are being issued in this area. We see a mix of housing types, though a single-family currently consists of about 2/3 of all of your residential development. Now, we know that Apex is not only growing in size, but also having a significant impact on the economy. The number of Apex residents with jobs has increased over 5% over the past five years. Also, we've seen that the median income here in Apex outpaces that of Wake County, the Raleigh metro area, the state, and the United States as well. When we talk about this from a transportation perspective, it's interesting to start to see some of the commute patterns that are happening within the town of Apex. Overall, when you compare Apex to the nation as a whole, the commute times are slightly under what you're seeing as that national average. But this is something that we need to continue to be very vigilant about. There are regional travel demand modeling tools that help us project, just as we're projecting our population. It helps us project out what that travel demand is going to be in the future. And certainly, what we see from those is a demonstrated need for additional capacity or other attention being paid to the transportation system. So now, I'd like to take you through just a couple of things of what we've heard when we've reached out to the public in our efforts so far. First, I'll talk about our overarching public engagement process. So we're extremely pleased with the level of feedback that we have gotten so far. Most notably, our online survey, which, as I mentioned, we recently closed, we had over 1,200 individual responses as a part of that. Now, that's the individual people that took it, and then, of course, all of them gave us a wealth of information when they were filling out the surveys. There were actually individual comments in there. We saw over 2,600 individual written comments, in addition to all of the survey questions that we had. In our public workshop, we had 60 attendees. And then, the five focus group meetings that we've had thus far, we've gone through bicycle and pedestrian, development, downtown, schools, and transit. We'll also be meeting with staff over the coming months, and then be revisiting some of these topics again as we move toward recommendations. It's also important to note that through every one of these engagement activities, we've also provided opportunities for folks to tell us what their specific issues and needs are via maps and entering some of those particular comments as they relate to transportation and land use. So I'd like to just highlight a couple of the key findings that we've been able to take away from the survey, and I'll move through some of these fairly quickly, so if you have any questions, certainly feel free to let me know. So we did ask participants what they felt the most important transportation issue was facing the town of Apex. And we had over half of all of our respondents tell us that traffic congestion and delay was their number-one concern. But as you continue to look through the list, you also see a significant number of responses on a disconnect between land use and transportation planning, and also communication about multimodal travel, such as bicycle, pedestrians, and transit. So we have 22% of all of our respondents noting that as their top concern. We also asked folks, kind of reframing the conversation a little different way, "How should your tax dollars be spent on transportation in Apex?" Trying to make that very real for each individual respondent. When we looked at that, we saw kind of an interesting mix of responses. Widening existing roads was our number-one response, but also closely behind, things like improving intersections, constructing new roads, and also sidewalks and crosswalks, greenways, and on-street bike facilities. So you actually see a fairly even distribution across all of the different needs that were communicated there. We tried to get not only at what people's aspirations are for travel, but also what they're doing right now. So we asked folks, "What mode of transportation do you typically take to work or school?" And we saw 95% of our respondents drive alone typically on their way to work or school. But we also had 7% of folks telling us they carpool, and then also responders that told us about walking, biking, and taking transit. Incidentally, in the other box, most of those folks either told us they work from home or they're retired. We also got into some of the land use questions that we wanted to get a little bit more information on. So we talked to them about what are the biggest housing needs for Apex, and we had a range of different choices that folks could respond on. The number-one highest response that we saw was quality affordable housing. We had 47% of our respondents tell us that. And then modest, single-family homes, right behind it at 42%. And then our number-three, with four and lower being significantly lower, would be housing for seniors. We also asked people to find out a little bit more spatially what they were interested in, in terms of those new development locations. And we asked from both a residential, commercial, and industrial perspective, giving folks the same types of choices for each one of those different use types. We saw our number-one response for residential being on vacant, underused lands in areas that are developed overall. In commercial, we actually had three responses that were fairly close to one another, talking about existing highway corridors, round intersections, in mixed-use developments, and near the downtown. And then for industrial, our number-one response, by a fair measure, was at the edge of town. We got into a little bit more detail at that point, asking folks to tell us a little more about their preferred development patterns. So we tried to paint a little bit of a picture with this question, to just ask people to think a little bit more about that setting and be able to visualize what they were interested in. So we had our first and second responses fairly close to one another, and this was a prioritization question, with our number-one response being separate residential and retail areas that are relatively close to one another. So that would be an area where businesses are located, so that most people drive to work, but you have an option. And then closely behind, second place, was a mixed-use walkable development with multi-story buildings, five stories or less. Something that's been an interesting topic of discussion, as we've talked with our focus groups, has been the question that we asked of the main reason that people choose to live in Apex. And this one was pretty overwhelming. Over half of our respondents choose the area because of the small-town charm. Finally, we asked folks what they felt the most important challenge was that was facing Apex. And we saw the top three answers overwhelmingly being population growth, traffic congestion, and safety, and loss of small-town charm. And again, going back to the previous question, we saw many written comments within that section that were focused on concerns about rapid growth and the loss of that small-town feel.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
On the previous slide, one more. 2%, "I do not live in Apex." That's interesting.
Yes, so this survey was open to anybody that chose to respond, so we encourage folks that may be work in Apex, or travel through Apex, or have other interests in Apex, to respond to us as well. What's notable about this is it was only a 2% number, so we do have the vast majority of our respondents in this survey are Apex residents.
Maybe they want to live here.
Or love surveys. Thank you.
Sure thing. So now, I'm going to move on and talk a little bit about what we heard as a part of our public workshops. As I mentioned, we had a series of activities. Activities were focused around getting at some of those overarching themes that we might be interested in. We had a visual preference survey, where we actually showed photos of locations, both in Apex and in surrounding areas, and asked people to tell us what they liked and what they didn't like. As I mentioned, we had mapping exercises where folks could engage with us, either about some of the land use areas that they like or dislike, and transportation concerns as well. One of the things that we did, talking about those overarching themes, is what we call a priority pyramid. This is really where we have the opportunity to have people think big picture and tell us about those themes that are of greatest importance to them. Number-one theme that we heard from everyone as a result of this exercise was quality of life, was our number-one issue, followed by downtown and integrated growth. This is notable because this is a land use and transportation combined effort, and you're seeing things like mobility and connectivity and safety coming down a little bit lower in the pyramid. So that's just an interesting thing when you think about the diversity responses that we've received to date. So I also want to touch on some of the interesting conversations that we've had as part of our focus groups. Town staff has done a wonderful job of engaging a group of folks that's been very eager to come and participate and give us a lot of great feedback, so we're excited to have that influence our process.
Were these groups part of that same effort? Like, they weren't part of that big public workshop, right?
They were not part of the overall public workshop. No, they were on separate days.
Okay.
So for our focus groups, I'll just kind of hit a couple of the highlights from each one. We were very fortunate to have our bicycle and pedestrian group, because this is not only something that's going to help our effort with Advanced Apex, but also the Apex Bike Plan that you all are also engaging in right now. So it's very exciting for us to have those efforts going on in tandem. Interestingly, we did ask a few polling questions as we went through the majority of our focus groups as well. And we're interested to see what we felt the highest priority was for new bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And one of the biggest things that we saw there was connecting residential areas to retail and office uses, so making sure that those destination points, not just for recreational users, but also commuter users, are going to be addressed in the area. As I mentioned, we are combining our two efforts together. We actually had the consultant team that's leading the Apex Bike Plan there with us, and we'll continue to have those groups meeting kind of as a combined unit throughout, so that we can make sure we're getting the best of both plans as we go through. When we talked about our development group, there was a robust conversation about how we're going to grow and what we look like as a result of that growth. So one of the things that was addressed was, "If we continue to grow as quickly as we have been over the past five years, what is our single-biggest challenge here going to be?" And 38% of our respondents said providing diverse housing options. There was quite a bit of discussion about affordable housing, mix of housing, and what that looks like within the community. Our downtown group was very enthusiastic, a lot of passionate folks with things to share about downtown Apex. And one of the things that we heard consistently throughout this process, when we asked folks what transportation improvement was needed most in downtown, you can see very overwhelmingly, our focus group attendees indicated it's the provision of additional parking. And we had that conversation in tandem with what we thought would enhance downtown and encourage people to visit downtown Apex. And you'll see perspectives shift a little bit when you're talking about what is necessary to accommodate folks and what's going to draw folks to the area. We saw 65% of our respondents most interested in enhanced and attractive wayfinding as a part of that effort. We also talked to folks that were representing some of the schools within the area. We also had representatives from Wake County Public Schools with us, which had a lot of great information to bring to the table. We got into a discussion of the facilities themselves, how we link up to schools, how schools are using different modes of travel, and we talked a little bit about how we engage with bicycle and pedestrian users as well. One of the topics that came up was regarding safe routes to school. We typically can hear referred to the five E's: engineering, education, enforcement, evaluation, and encouragement. And we just asked folks to tell us what we felt like was the number-one concern, as it concerns schools and folks trying to get there through alternate modes. And engineering was the predominant response that we heard from that. There was a desire for additional facilities, closing some of the gaps, and making sure that that is a reliable mode of transportation. We also had a great group when we spoke to our transit representatives. That's actually a standing committee for the town, so we were able to engage with them as part of our focus for this area, and talked about what we could be doing potentially if transit service were to be enhanced or expanded within the town, and what we would most like to connect to, to help serve some of that improved transit service. So that was a lot on input, but we've had a lot of input to share. So I'm excited that we've had so many folks participate with us. It's really been a very encouraging level of response for this community. So next steps, we're moving right into our recommendations development phase, both for the land use and transportation sides of this equation. We're going to be focusing on that all through this winter, on into spring. We'll likely be engaging with you guys again in the early spring to give you some updates on where things stand, what we've had in terms of preliminary findings, and the process that we've been going through over the past, the future coming months. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you all, and certainly would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Fluit. And before I open it to the council, let me just say, this is a presentation time, so I would hopefully encourage, other than anything that's pretty easy or brief, that we delay or hold on to some questions. Maybe we can compile them through the town manager and through Shannon. But does anybody have any specific questions of something that we saw tonight for clarification?
We will. Can we get the presentation issued?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to get that.
That's one thing I'd like to do.
All right, thanks.
I was wondering, you've done a similar survey with other communities that are similar size, and did anything kind of stand out as unique to Apex versus what you've seen in other places?
Yes. I would say a couple of the things that are particularly unique in this area, from what I've seen in other communities, is just the clear passion that people have for downtown and the reiteration of the small-town feel. That's something that I don't think we typically see in some other communities. So that's very interesting for us. And also, I would say, overarching, the response rate that we got was so robust in comparison to other communities that we have done this type of exercise in. So that indicates a population that's excited, interested, and willing to engage, and that really helps us make sure that we have the right kind of information when we go make our decisions.
Nice.
Just saying, I'm happy to see that the respondents sort of mimicked what we've been hearing, and that helps us do our work better, and just happy to be catching on to this complete streets and do all that we can to make sure that everyone can get throughout the town in a variety of ways and safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Fluit.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. At this time, I'll move to the consent agenda. These are items that are typically non-controversial and are enacted by a single motion and a single vote. Of course, any council member, if they see something that we would like to pull, they certainly may do so. Before I ask for that, I would like to recognize in consent number three, this is for appointments to the planning board and Board of Adjustments. I see Jack Clark is here tonight. One of the recommendations is for him to be on Board of Adjustments. We value his expertise, and we'd love to have him on there. Did anybody else make it that is requested to be appointed? I want to make sure I didn't leave anybody out. All right, thank you. Raise your hand for us, Jack, so we can see you. There you go. All right, thanks. Any questions, or is there a motion on the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
In a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve consent. Any discussion on the motion?
I do want to just make a comment.
Okay.
One of the items on the agenda was something that I had talked about in public forum.
Okay.
And I was glad to see, you know, us moving on that. And just, I mean, I know that when I talked in public forum, it was very quickly handled, got straight to our HOA, and was able to find a solution very quickly. So I was glad to see that.
Great. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, I look forward to your great service on the Board of Adjustments. We now get to the regular meeting agenda setting. This is where the council decides if what's written in front of us are the things that we're going to discuss tonight, and if not, we make an adjustment. I will point out that public hearing number eight will not be heard tonight, and so that will not be part of our agenda setting tonight. We do not need anything other than, I'm just pointing out that it will not be heard. And with that, I don't know, oh, we have one request for a closed session to, for the council to provide guidance to the town attorney? All right, and that will be at the, without objection, that will be at the end just before adjournment. All right, so with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda with these modifications?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda with the two modifications mentioned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the agenda is set, and as we move through this, public forum will be the first meeting of the month, and I want to make sure this is correct, because it will not be the first Tuesday in this case, because January 3rd, which is a Wednesday, will be our first meeting of the month in January. Mr. Town Manager, can you confirm, January 3rd is the first month, first meeting of the month?
It is.
All right, thank you. So with that, our public forum will be on January 3rd, and we look forward to public input there. We now move into the time of public hearings. Public hearing number one is a budget, and our budget and management analyst, Amanda Grogan, would like to receive input. And so with that, is there anything we need to do to introduce, other than to just say?
So this is the annual pre-budget public hearing that this council has traditionally done, to hear from the citizens, to inform the staff's preparation of the budget.
All right, so with that, and since the town manager is the one who creates the budget and submits it to the town council ultimately in about five months, clock is ticking, Mr. Town Manager, we'll try to get some public input for you.
Grogan's on it.
Oh, right, you've delegated, that's good. Ms. Grogan back there is eagerly awaiting input. Is there anyone who would like to speak for the, oh, I have a sign-up sheet, that's right. Tom Colwell, come on up. And officially, for the record, the public hearing is open on public hearing number one. Mr. Colwell, you have the floor.
All right, thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of the Public Art Committee, and so first of all, I'd like to thank this council and our previous council for the support of the establishment of the Public Art Committee here in Apex. The committee was approved last month and has been busy at work putting together some initiatives for next year. So I'd like to kind of share some of those with you. But first, just what we've been doing is making sure that not only does public art enhance the kind of aesthetic in Apex, but also involves the community as much as possible. So a number of these programs and projects do both of those things. One of the items that we'd like to recommend, and these run the gamut, so we have items from photography to murals to sculpture that we're contemplating. One of those is a picture spot location that we'd put around town, and this would encourage folks to go out and take photography of their own in front of interesting or intriguing locations around town, and then share those perhaps on social media. We have other programs that we want to wrap around that. Another one that we're looking at is what we're calling an art lock, and this is a series of sculptures that would create a kind of linkage between the town campus here, Hunter Street Park, and downtown Apex, again involving the community in a kind of active outdoor way, and engaging them with the art and all of our other kind of features around, close to our downtown. The murals that we're contemplating are a couple of locations in our downtown that we'd The murals that we're contemplating are a couple of locations in our downtown that we'd, that we're looking at right now. We don't have one selected, but we'd like to include something in the plan for that as well. There is a number of kind of facades in the campus, or in the downtown area that are kind of in need of a little, little love and a little refresh perhaps, and we think we can do that and still maintain historic character of downtown. We have a sculpture idea for one of our public parks, so it's something that would kind of demonstrate the kind of outdoors nature, perhaps competition, or just kind of the active lifestyle that we have here in Apex in one of our parks. And then finally, we'd like to continue the holiday painting program that you may have seen downtown this year. One of the members of our Public Art Committee just dove in and took that on, partnered with Apex High School, Apex Friendship High, and the downtown businesses to get that done in a very short period of time. We'd like to make that an annual event and maybe grow it over time. So, it's kind of ambitious plan for a first year out of the gate, but the team is really eager to get going. And so our funding request for next year would be $76,000. This would really be something that benefits the entire community. Public art is something that's in the public domain, and would interact with everyone in the town of Apex. So we feel like for a town the size of ours, and it's a, it's hopefully, I know there's competing priorities, but hopefully considered as a reasonable request.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Colwell.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Having reached the end of the list, we'll close the public hearing. There will be other opportunities for public to provide input on the budget. This is just the first.
And then there's the annual budget, annual dot budget at apexnc.org is the email address for citizens to provide input via email. Ms. Grogan gets that, and all those responses will be compiled and delivered to the council.
Alright, very good. And if anybody wants to make sure they got that, Ms. Grogan's back here, I'm sure she'll be happy to write it on your agenda as you walk out the door. If she's still around. I don't care how long she's hanging around, but, alright, thank you very much. We now move to public hearing number two. This is a possible motion for rezoning application number 17, CZ 24, and this is approximately 1.8 acres off of Laura Duncan Road. Shelley Mayo is presenting.
Good evening. As the mayor said, this is about a 1.8 acre parcel. Can everybody hear me? Microphone's weird. Okay. The parcel is located at the intersection of the Apex Peakway and Laura Duncan. As you can see, it's kind of an unusual intersection, and this is the southernmost piece. If you'll let me orient you to the site just a little bit, this is the villages of Apex South Town Homes directly to the west. To the south is the Food Lion Shopping Center. To the east is Shepherd's Vineyard and a couple of undeveloped parcels. To the north is the Caldwell Banker Office Site, and there are additional residences to the north of this as well. The site's primarily grassy with some preserved trees along the road frontage, and a portion of the BMP for Vineyard Station is located on this site, as you can see on the aerial. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on September 26th. That neighborhood meeting report is attached to your staff report. The applicant is, the existing zoning is mostly planned commercial with a sliver of office and institutional here along the top, and the applicant is requesting to rezone the entire parcel to planned commercial conditional zoning. This is consistent with the 2030 land use map. The uses that are spelled out in your staff report are numerous. There are 42 of them. I am not going to read all of them to you, but I will give you a sampling. Greenway, Restaurant General, medical or dental office or professional, I'm sorry, medical or dental office or clinic, convenience store with gas sales, Grocery General, tailor shop, pharmacy, and daycare facility. There are also several conditions that the applicant has proposed. Most of these are consistent with standard town recommendations for architectural requirements. There are a couple of those, though, that are unique to this specific one, and I'll just highlight those for you. The very first one, which is located on page two of your staff report, says that no motorized vehicles or equipment may be sold or rented at this location. This is because retail sales bulky goods technically allows the sale of things like mopeds and lawn mowers, and we were trying to avoid that particular kind of use here. It also includes things like mattress stores and those kinds of things, but we wanted to prohibit the louder items from being sold, if that makes sense. And the applicant did agree with that as well. And then if you'll look on page three of your staff report, number nine has four parts to it. For convenience stores with gasoline sales, the hours of operation shall be limited from 5:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. No overnight parking of tractor-trailers will be allowed on the site. A parking, the parking requirement shall be reduced to one space per 285 square feet per a parking study that was submitted by Ramey Kemp. The typical parking requirement for a convenience store with gas sales is one per 300, so it's a reduction by 15 square feet. And then the fourth one is a little wordy, but essentially what it means is that when the site plan comes in, the canopy has to be at least as far away from the road as the main building. Preferably, the gasoline canopy is behind the main building, but at the very least, it can't be any closer to the road than the main building will be. Planning staff recommends approval, as submitted by the applicant. Planning board also heard this at the regularly scheduled meeting and recommended unanimous approval as well. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo. Any questions for Ms. Mayo?
How many acres is the old office park? It looks like it's only 10% of the site anyhow.
I am not certain, to be honest. It looks like it's probably about 2 and 1/2 total that's buildable at this point, but I don't have that number in front of me.
I have a question. The hours, limiting hours of operation from, I guess it was 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., what was the, I believe the Food Lion's a 24-hour food line, so I'm curious as to why we're closing the gas station for 4 hours.
I can't confirm whether or not the Food Lion's 24 hours or not. To be honest, I don't live in Apex, so I'm not at the Food Lion later on in the day. But typically, that's done just to kind of prohibit the louder sounds that go on in the dead of the night. This was something that was provided by the applicant, so they would actually have to speak to the rationale to that.
The, I know there's some trees along the edge there, along Laura Duncan and along the Peakway, with our required buffers on a commercial zoning in this site, what is that, would there be any undisturbed buffer? Would those trees remain? Would it be?
So those are 30-foot required undisturbed buffers along both Laura Duncan and the Peakway. If they are disturbed for any reason other than road improvements, so external side-road improvements, they'd have to be bumped up to 50 feet. So whatever falls within that 30 feet would be preserved. I can't speak to how many of those trees currently fit within that because that's a site plan level, and we don't have the survey information for that yet.
Could I clarify on a couple of those questions? So the area that's O and I is 0.25 acres. It's very small.
Sorry, I thought you meant the other side.
And the Food Lion, according to the internet, and according to, I've been there, it closes at 11:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Thought you meant the other.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. From any council members? Anything? Thank you, Ms. Mayo. At this time, I'll ask if the applicant wishes to speak. Looks like a representative of the applicant is approaching.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant Brookfield Properties. Here with me tonight is Mr. Frank Morrissey of Brookfield. They're the owners of the site, they're also the developers and owners of the adjacent Food Lion parcel, so they're very interested in seeing what happens here. I was going to answer Mr. Jensen's question associated with acreage, but Diane did a great job of beating me to the ponchets about 0.25 acres. Have a little bit of information associated with kind of how this parcel was created, and some of you might have background on it, but I just want to walk through it briefly. This is the existing zoning map, and this, as you can see, the planned commercial is the orange portion, the O and I is kind of the gray portion, and the Peakway moves in this direction, and you have this small parcel here. At one point, however, it was all one contiguous parcel. This was planned commercial, this was O and I, and the Peakway came in at a slightly different orientation. The town determined at one point or another that there was a desire to have the Peakway move slightly to the north, and as a result of the, and so they worked with my client to reconfigure that particular intersection. When the intersection moved north, it essentially created this, what I would consider orphan O and I parcel. I severed it from the mother parcel, and what you have left is a very small O and I parcel adjacent to a shopping center and a parcel that's vacant but is zoned for planned commercial. And so rather than kind of come forward with just zoning the 0.25 acres, the, there was a request made by the staff that we include all of the remaining parcel in one zoning, in the one zoning district, which is planned commercial conditional district, which we believe makes a lot of sense. What that means is that the vast majority of the parcel can already be used for the uses that are included in this zoning condition, or zoning petition, and as has been alluded to, a number of the uses have been eliminated that otherwise wouldn't be consistent with the town's long-range plan in this area. Just a couple of things with respect to closing the gas station or the limited hours, Mr. Moore, that was a request that the town staff had made, that we consider limiting the hours of operation to something other than 24 hours, which my client was willing to accommodate. And then you've mentioned, you got a question about the existing tree canopy, and Shelley is correct, there's a 30-foot undisturbed buffer in that area that will save the vast majority of those trees, and it is a true undisturbed buffer in that area. So with that, we're here to answer any questions that you all may have. Again, I think this is more of a cleanup-type rezoning application, but certainly here to answer questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Let's see if there are any, since I have no one else signed up for the public hearing, we'll probably be able to close the public hearing pretty soon. But let me see if council members have a question for Mr. Barron.
I do have one quick question, and that is, the Peakway through there, the Peakway was, the goal was four lanes, and the Peakway through there is only two lanes, and it's very narrow. I'm concerned about the right-of-way and how that, how this will impact future expansion of the Peakway in that zone. Maybe that's a question for the county staff.
That might be Russell's question, yeah.
We've got 100 things there now, so we got...
So you have sufficient right-of-way there?
Yes. 400.
Because, so as a part of... Can you go ahead and introduce?
Yes, hey, so I'm Frank Morrissey, Brookfield Properties. So when we worked with the town back in 2010 to shift the right-of-way north, as a part of that, we also, there's enough right-of-way to make it a four lanes, so two lanes on either side. That was a part of that whole process. Does that make sense? So there's enough right-of-way as a part of that process in 2010 for it to be a four-lane Apex Peakway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Any other questions from council for Mr. Barron or the applicant in general?
The piece across, I guess, to the east, northeast there, that's going to remain O and I?
It is, yes, sir.
Would changing any of the zoning for this one affect the zoning, or the uses of the one next to where the rest of the BMP is? And there's, I'm guessing...
Maybe I pointed to the right parcel, see if I can get to a parcel map. So, we have, essentially what we, what exists is there's a parcel here, which is the small parcel, which is technically connected from a tax parcel standpoint to this O and I piece, but we're only zoning a portion of it. And then you have this parcel here, and then you have a third parcel down here.
Right, that's one.
We are rezoning all of this. None of the conditions associated with this parcel or the remainder of the track, or the existing shopping center, will change. What is changing are, there are uses that are currently permitted in the existing planned commercial general district, which is what this currently is on. There are uses that are being conditioned out of that zoning, essentially limiting uses that were deemed to be inconsistent with the town's long-range plan for that site.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Mr. Barron.
Thank you all.
Alright, having reached the end of the public hearing list, I'll close the public hearing and bring the matter to council for possible motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Alright, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number three. This is Shannon Cox, our senior transportation planner. Will talk to us about some transportation plan updates to the thoroughfare and Collector Street plan map. Ms. Cox?
Good evening. I think I may have the wrong slide show up here. Thank you. The proposed amendments to the transportation plan tonight are requested by planning staff, public works and transportation staff, and Jacob Anderson of the Alliance Group, representing the West Village Planned Unit Development. They are in the vicinity of Kelly Road, nears Kelly Road, and Old US 1 Highway. The main purpose of these amendments is to update the thoroughfare and Collector Street map to reflect what the planning board recommended and town council approved as part of, part of the West Village PUD. This includes four changes to the map. The first is to add two major collector streets. The first intersecting Kelly Road and extending to Old US 1 Highway. And the second intersecting the first major collector street to Old US 1 Highway. And remember, a major collector street has 60 feet of right-of-way. It's a two-lane road. Residential driveways are not allowed to directly access it. The second change is to downgrade Kelly Road from a future four-lane median divided facility to a three-lane facility, and that would be from the intersection of the new major collector streets to Old US 1 Highway. The last change is to add two future roundabouts to the plan. The first would be at the intersection of Kelly Road and the new major collector streets. The second would be at the intersection of the two new major collector streets. These changes are consistent with the recommendations based on the traffic impact analysis conducted as part of West Village PUD, and they have the following advantages. The first is that this network of collector streets will help to disperse traffic in this area that would normally be traveling mostly on Kelly Road. The second is that it addresses an existing issue created by the proximity of the Kelly Road intersection to the NC 540 ramps. There's only about 540 feet separating these intersections. Typically, DOT would be looking for about 1,200 feet of separation. This alignment also creates a full movement intersection across from Pleasant Plains Road, which I know you can, it's hard to see up there, but Pleasant Plains is this blue line here. That's a minor collector street on our plan and the entrance to a future Pleasant Park. So having a full movement intersection here benefits both the future park and the West Village PUD, and it makes it more likely that a traffic signal would be warranted in this location in the future. Finally, the changes include two roundabouts, which research has shown reduce the severity of vehicular collisions. And I forgot to show you that the West Village... And I forgot to show you that the West Village PUD is outlined in this black here. So this network of streets matches the context of land uses that are proposed as part of West Village. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of these changes at their December 11th meeting. Planning staff and public works and transportation staff also recommend these changes. And Russell and I are here to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
So we're downgrading from a four-lane to a three-lane because of the distance to 540, is that correct?
Yes, that is part of it. And this... What we don't show on the transportation plan, so it's not included in the amendments. But what is proposed is to make Kelly Road a right-in, right-out-only movement. So this would be carrying traffic that wants to make a right turn here, but cars that would turn left would be taking one of these others. Actually, they'd be coming over here and turning left.
Trying to secure this. Is Kelly Road... It's a department transportation road, isn't it? Kelly, that's not ours.
Kelly is, yes. Yes, it is.
And is the plan to have stoplights at each of those two yellow intersections that hit Old US One?
So if they warrant signalization, then there would be a signal. It's probably only going to be at this intersection, which would be a full movement intersection. The plan is also to make this a right-in, right-out intersection.
I think that's quite a plan.
Okay.
I think in their short-term plan, I think they're showing that one as a right-in, right-out. But long-term, that would also be full movement to serve the commercial area. So there is, again, a potential for a traffic signal there as well because of the commercial access. But as Shannon pointed out, it's a T-intersection, so you don't have the opposing volume that you might have with Pleasant Park.
While you're there, on Kelly Road, is we keeping the same right-of-way for Kelly Road as we have now? We're just reducing the expected build?
It's 60-foot. And on a three-lane road, we typically ask for, I think, 70-foot.
70, but West Village, I believe, dedicated the 100. The remainder.
A full 100?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we will keep that as the dedication, I assume.
Yeah, additional right-of-way is certainly better. I mean, we wouldn't... We can certainly use it.
But 70 is what we ask for for our three-lane section.
Okay. Featured bicycle pathways or whatever seems to come to mind. Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right. Not hearing any, I will open the public hearing. However, I have no one signed up for the public hearing, so we will close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council for possible motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion to approve? I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right. That passes unanimously. And we move on to public hearing number four. This is a possible UDO motion and amendment. Ms. Amanda Bunce is presenting.
Good evening. So we have three amendments proposed for you tonight, and I'll pause after each one to give you a chance to ask questions. So the first is actually a series of amendments that are related to the kennel and veterinary clinic uses. The primary goal is to combine the kennel indoor and outdoor uses into one use and to update some of the standards that we see for veterinary clinics and hospitals so that those uses are consistent. So as I stated, the first use is... The first part of the amendment is to primarily combine the two kennel uses. So at the top, you see the zoning districts that are in the UDO, and the uses are to the left. A P indicates that the use is a permitted use. An S indicates that it's allowed only as a special use, which means they have to come before you to seek approval. And then where there's an asterisk in the small-town character overlay district, that use is allowed only if it's allowed in the underlying district. So we are proposing to eliminate the veterinary clinic or hospital use from the B2 district, which is primarily found in the core of downtown. And there's already a use standard that restricts the use, prohibits the use, within the central business district essentially. So we feel that there are other uses that are better suited in our core business district than a vet clinic or hospital. For the kennel uses, we are proposing to eliminate the opportunity for those uses, for the kennel uses as special use essentially in the RA and RR districts. Those are the more rural areas. The B1 district, which is the neighborhood business district. But add the use to Tech Flex and the major employment center district as used by right. And then, of course, indicate that kennel would be permitted within the small-town character overlay district.
Why would we be eliminating it from RA?
From RA?
For cultural.
It's primarily... Those areas are primarily residential in nature. We really don't have any... Many agricultural uses within our RA-zoned areas. We do have some RA-zoned areas that are somewhat close into town in neighborhoods. So...
How many acres though is a house on there? What's the minimum acreage on RA?
It's five acres.
Five acres.
But there are properties that are less than five acres that are zoned RA.
I was just thinking of that because I do know of one kennel that's on RA, not in our area, but it...
So this... The proposed amendments tonight, I will say, are not intended to be retroactive, and they would only apply to uses going forward from the date of adoption.
But I'm just trying to understand why we restrict it, frankly. Five acres or even less. Okay. It just seems like a... I hate to restrict people for...
Ultimately, the council makes the final decision on what's included in the UDO. So the next part of the update is updating the definition. So obviously, we would eliminate the definition for kennel outdoor and update the kennel indoor to just be kennel. And essentially, the intent is the same. And then we are just adding a statement, such use may also include outdoor exercise and bathroom areas. That's typically found, but we're just making it clear that a kennel may have those areas. The next set of... Section of these amendments relate to the use standards, the conditions or standards that have to be met in order for the use to be permitted. We are proposing for the vet clinic or hospital that these use standards also apply in the Tech Flex zoning district. They don't currently. However, we have a lot... Several areas of Tech Flex zoning that are adjacent to residential areas, so we feel like these use standards are needed. And then we have proposed a list here of use standards for outdoor exercise and bathroom areas that's very consistent with the current kennel indoor use standards, limiting the hours of operation. This standard is new, be any outdoor or bathroom... Outdoor exercise or bathroom area for this use within the small-town character overlay district will be required to provide buffers. The small-town character overlay district is exempt from buffer requirements. So this will require a vegetated screen for these areas where a buffer is required. And then moving on to the standards for kennel, you can see a very similar list of amendments. So those standards will be similar between vet clinics and kennels. And then finally, we have to make some updates to our lane use classes for buffers, just for healthkeeping purposes, to reflect the combination of those uses. And then finally, for the parking section related to kennel uses, currently, we have kennel indoor at just one space per 300 square feet, but it doesn't give any clarification, 300 square feet of what. And so we are proposing that that ratio apply to the office and reception area and that any kennel or animal care area have a parking standard of one per 1,500 square feet. And then, of course, no parking required for the outdoor exercise or bathroom area. And that is all of the amendments related to this topic. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
So we're allowing kennels and vet clinics and everything in the small-town overlay, but not in the residential and RA area?
That's correct. The small-town character overlay district covers a good bit of our downtown area, which includes various zoning districts. I'll go back to the use table. So the vet clinic and kennel, while it's permitted in the small-town character overlay district, must also... You must also be zoned one of these districts. So if you were zoned medium density, you could not have one of those uses. So this overlay district gives us the ability to eliminate uses that may be appropriate in districts otherwise located, but not necessarily in a downtown area.
Was this change initiated by some kind of... Was it kind of a cleanup effort, or was it more like kennels and vet clinics are kind of becoming more similar to each other, you know, it's making more consistent?
I think it's a little bit of both. You typically don't see the pure kennel outdoor use anymore. For the most part, people want their animals to be inside through the majority of the year, and so you just typically don't see the kennel outdoor use any longer. And so we felt like it was outdated and there was not a need for it. So we took the opportunity to clean up the standards, combine the uses, and then look at where those... There may be similarities or between that and the vet clinic use, so...
I guess I'm still back. I'm hammered on that same thing. S stands for special permit, is that correct?
Special use permit, yes.
Special use permit. And when they ask for that, they have to go through a bunch of hoops to get there anyhow.
It's a quasi-judicial public hearing before you.
Yeah. I just hesitate to take that away from people that are in RA or RR because I do know... I do know people that have kennels. And it's an opportunity for people that are in that area that may not have regular jobs and they're out, that they can actually have a business of some sort to run. That's my only thought. Everything else looks good. But I would want to keep both of those as special permits. Just... I mean, we're going to review them anyhow.
Right.
And just to give people the opportunity. That's all. That's my thought.
Are you talking specifically about the RA and the RR?
Yes. Where we struck the two S's out of their B1, it makes a lot of sense to not, I agree, not have kennels in your B1 because it's kind of more for...
General retail.
Food and retail and stuff like that, yeah.
It sounds like the proposal may be to keep special use for those two...
That's what I would propose.
Residential types. The low-density residential type, the lowest-density residential types.
And I guess we need to go through... Finish off our public hearing yet before we...
That's fine. I just want to make sure we were hearing you before we move on.
Yeah, that's what I'm adding.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We can come back to that.
Okay.
All right. Ready for number two?
Number two. This is essentially a cleanup change. So the proposal here is to the accessory apartment standard and the encroachments into setbacks standards to just make it clear, the setbacks that apply to detached and unattached accessory dwelling units, accessory apartments. And we are not proposing any change to the actual standard. We're just making it easier to understand and be clear to the user what those standards are. So I'll just summarize for you. If an accessory apartment is attached to the house, it has to meet the same building setbacks as the house. If it's a detached structure, then the setback is five feet from the side or the rear property line. And again, that's what currently applies, but the way it's currently written, it can be a little confusing. So we're just cleaning that up. And amendment three is, again, clarifying something, the way the front yard is measured in this primarily comes into play with standards in the small-town character overlay district in what is the front yard area. And so instead of referencing just the front building line, the question was, what does that include? The porch area, or is it just the main part of the structure? And so the intent is to change... The proposal is to change that to the front plane of the building, which would exclude the porch area. And we've added that phrase in, excluding permitted encroachments into the required front yard setback. So that's primarily your unenclosed porches. And that is all of the amendments that are proposed tonight.
And I see unanimously recommended by... Or for approval by the planning board?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for staff?
I would also like to see the small-town character overlay district be a special use permit as well, something they bring to us and talk to us about.
Would that be in any district within the small-town character overlay district? It's currently... The vet clinics are currently allowed as a used by right.
So, okay, that's what the asterisk is, if it's got to be zoned within that.
Yeah, there actually should be an asterisk by that P by kennel as well.
I don't think there's any objection to that clarification. Any other comments for Ms. Bunce? All right. So I've heard, to be clear, I've heard a suggestion from Councilman Jensen, and didn't really hear any objections, but let's ask, is... Are there any objections if we modify the RA and RR columns to include special use on the kennel row? Right?
Right.
That's the right way to word it?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any objections?
Yes.
All right. No objections. And then, okay, let's clarify on that one.
And including the asterisks on the kennel.
And then, right. So the second one is small-town character to include the asterisk on the kennel row. Those two items. All right. I think that's kind of clear. Is there a motion to approve? Sorry? Oh, public hearing? Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, there's... No one signed up. I'll open the public hearing and then close it. Thank you for the reminder. We were so, so into this chart.
[laughing]
I was ready to drill down. All right. Thank you very much for the reminder, Mr. Town Manager. With that, though, let me ask if there is a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion with the... All right. With the two amendments, would you like to make a second since you were... All right. So not to ask leading questions, but you were vocal on those two items, so I thought it may work out. Are there any discussions on the motion and second to approve with those two items that we've discussed as modifications? No discussion, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. That passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number five. And this one says, "The public hearing will be readadvertised pending council action." So let me ask for clarification from the planning director, Diane Ken.
Yes, we need you to set the public hearing for January 3rd, and then we will advertise it for January 3rd.
All right. Thank you. It seems pretty straightforward. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing for this item for January 3rd?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Discussion? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We've now set that public hearing to January the 3rd. We now move to public hearing number six. This is a possible motion for the ordinance of annexation for about one acre along Green Level Church Road. Diane Ken presenting.
All right. Good evening. So this annexation is for a single-family home. The property contains .99 acres. It's out on Green Level Church Road. We're not going to get out too far, but it's across from the secluded acres neighborhood out in our ETJ. The property is requesting annexation because of a well failure and they need public water. And so we do recommend approval of this annexation.
Diane, you get the hard ones.
I know. Save the hard ones for myself.
All right. And just to be clear, this is a property owner requested annexation.
It is a property, yes. All of our annexations are requested by the property owner.
I like to be clear. Public hearing number six is now open for public input, and I don't have anyone who has signed up, so I'll now close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right. That passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number seven. And this is also an ordinance of... Our question of annexation for about 87 acres with a whole list of names, so I'm going to let Diane Ken present this.
All right.
Go for it.
So this annexation is for what was previously approved by town council, known as the Linden Master Subdivision Plan. It is located out near Woodridge off of Olive Chapel Road, and they are requesting annexation so that they are able to get their construction plans signed, and it is so that they can get public water and sewer for the project that was previously approved. We do recommend approval.
All right, thank you very much. And just checking to see if anybody else wanted to get up, but I don't see anybody who's signed up, so I'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council for possible motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just for the record, I did not support this project in that location at the time it was presented.
For rezoning? Okay.
Exactly.
All right, okay.
But unfortunately, or unfortunately, we, you know, we've gone through the rezoning and everything else. We are pretty well committed to, to annex this property.
Right.
All right, any further discussion on the motion to approve the annexation? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously with your note on record. We now recognize that public hearing number eight is not heard tonight, so that concludes our public hearing for the night. And Mr. Town Manager, we look like we're doing all right, 11 after 8:00. We now move to unfinished business. This is number one. This is a approval resolution declaring the results of the November 7th referendum for the Parks and Recreation Facilities Bonds. Vance Holloman, where is he at? There he is. Come on up, Mr. Holloman. Tell us some good stuff.
Oh, well, we had some very good results with the referendum, held on November 7th, overwhelmingly approved by the voters. The Wake County Board of Elections has taken action to certify and determine the results of the election to be valid. As a result, it is now necessary for the town to also declare the results of the election, also approve a statement of that result, and instruct the town clerk to publish a notice of that statement.
Great, thank you very much. So for the council, this is where we get to declare what we pretty much know, but now we get to put our names on it and say it's done. So with that, let me ask if there is a motion. Well, we can ask a question, but I assume we all know what the bond is for now. So I'll ask for a motion to, to approve a resolution declaring the results to be complete.
I will make that motion.
All right.
And I'll second that one.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on the motion to recommend approval or to approve the results?
Oh, we don't have to spend the money, but it gives us a few hoary.
That's right. Thank you for reminding us. All right, I'll call for the vote if I don't hear any more discussion. Meaningful. All right.
Well, it is meaningful in that way.
I'm just messing with you, council.
I'm going to mess back.
Okay, but, it's good.
I love you, you know that.
Well, sure. Thank you. I'll call for the vote now, so I can get out of this awkward situation. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously. That concludes our unfinished business. There's no new business, no closed, oh, sorry, we have a closed session that we added to the agenda so that the town attorney can get guidance from the town council. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into closed session for that purpose.
I'll make a motion. We go into closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to go into closed session. Any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, we will now go into closed session, let the public be advised that there are no further items on our agenda tonight. However, you're welcome to stick around just in case you want to, but we will be in that room there in closed session. So we are now recessed to closed session. Thank you.